Thank you. Okay, good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us today. We are here today in unity with the support of over eighty advocacy groups, organizations, municipalities, unions, and the hundreds of thousands of Marylanders that we all represent. For one very straightforward reason, we are demanding that the Maryland General Assembly reconvene for a special session. Before we start, there are no words to describe the loss that our communities have suffered over the last several months. So please join me in a moment of silence for all of the lives lost to COVID, as well as all of the lives lost by the hands of the police. Un momento de silencio, por favor. Thank you so much. My colleague will translate my remarks into Spanish after I speak for the Spanish language media who's present with us today. So I just wanted to note that for several months, we have been calling on Governor Hogan to take action on a variety of different issues, pressing issues, and he has failed to act. The leadership of the Maryland General Assembly is desperately needed right now to address a variety of different issues. The first one, emergency COVID protections for workers, renters, and homeowners. Secondly, addressing Governor Hogan's vetoes, including a critical HBCU settlement bill. And three, addressing immediate state revenue loss due to recent federal tax policy changes. Over thirteen states have reconvened or plan to reconvene for a special session thus far, including our neighbor Virginia. Their states have explored ample ways to reconvene and to do so safely and urgently. Today, you will hear from several directly impacted Maryland residents and leading advocates to speak to each of the issues that I just mentioned that simply cannot wait until the next legislative session in January. So thank you so much for being here. I'm going to pass it to Josie to translate, and then we'll get started with our agenda. Thank you.
Buenos días a todos y muchas gracias por acompañarnos hoy. Hoy estamos aquí unidos con el apoyo de más de ochenta grupos de defensa, organizaciones religiosas, municipalidades, sindicatos, y cientos de miles de residentes de Maryland. Una razón bien sencilla: queremos que la Asamblea General de Maryland se vuelva a reunir para una sesión especial. Antes de empezar, queremos compartir que no hay palabras para describir la pérdida que nuestras comunidades han sufrido durante estos últimos meses. Tuvimos un momento de silencio recién para acordarnos de las vidas que se han perdido. Durante varios meses, le hemos pedido al gobernador Larry Hogan que aborde una variedad de diferentes cuestiones urgentes, y no ha actuado. El liderazgo de la Asamblea General necesitaba desesperadamente abordar los siguientes temas: Protecciones del coronavirus de emergencia para los trabajadores, inquilinos y propietarios de viviendas; abordar los vetos del gobernador Hogan, incluyendo un acuerdo crítico de las universidades y colegios afroamericanos; y abordar la pérdida inmediata de ingresos estatales debido a cambios recientes en la política fiscal federal. For those of you who are watching us on Facebook Live, please leave your comments and questions in the chat. Turning it back to you, Kat. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Josie. I'm going to go ahead and pass it to Rakara Jones from 1199 SEIU.
Hi, everyone. Good morning. I want to thank everybody for being here. Again, I'm the political director with 1199 SEIU. We are the largest healthcare union in the state. We represent a number of frontline workers at hospitals and nursing homes across the state of Maryland and DC. I just want to start with a huge thank you to the very workers who have kept our state functioning during this pandemic, the childcare workers, healthcare workers, grocery store sanitation, fast food workers. These are the folks who have literally risked their lives and the lives of their loved ones for us every day so that the rest of us are able to function during this pandemic. You know, it takes some unimaginable carriage to get up and go to work every day, and not only do your job, but to have to do your job and deal with this invisible enemy on a regular basis. Many of these workers are low-wage workers, and they are performing their jobs, and they are lacking basic employee protection. So not only are we asking them to go out during a pandemic, we're also just not protecting them while they're doing it. They are working in very unsafe conditions. Regardless of what anyone says, we are still lacking adequate PPE. There is not enough PPE to cover the workers that are going to work every day. They are still reusing it. Many of them receive no type of hazard pay, and they are fearing retaliation when they decide to report these unfair conditions and unsafe conditions. You know, as we move through the various stages of reopening, it's even more clear that unfortunately, Governor Hogan has done very little to protect the most vulnerable workers. Many folks are now having zero choice but to return to work, and we know that the most impacted workers are low-wage workers, and these are the same folks who've been hit the hardest across our state with COVID-19. So there is an immediate, immediate, and urgent need for the members of the Maryland General Assembly to pass common sense legislation to assist their constituents and working families across the state. So today, we are joining hundreds of organizations and thousands of folks across the state that are calling on the General Assembly to convene a special session to pass and to address emergency common sense worker protection legislation. Just for a few examples, we're hoping that they will amend the Maryland Healthy Families Act to address public health emergencies, make sure employees are protected when they need to use sick time or report unsafe conditions, ensure that the Maryland Occupational Safety and Health establishes and enforces a COVID-related standard to protect our health and the safety of our workers. I just want to end by saying, if we are truly serious about addressing this pandemic, we have to protect the very people that are on the front line, the folks that we call our heroes. And we consider the distinguished members of the Maryland General Assembly as essential workers. They are essential to our democracy. They are essential to the very people of the state that elected them. And since day one, my members and workers across the state, Maryland frontline essential employees, have been showing up every single day and performing their duties. And we are urging the members of the General Assembly to do the same as essential workers. Show up for your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Rakara, for those words, right? Our essential workers have showed up, and now it's time for the General Assembly to show up as well. I would like to pass it on now to Chris Harley from UFCW Local 400.
Good morning. My name is Christopher Harley. I am a giant food worker. I've been a giant food worker for fifteen years. I'm just here to ask you, your guys, to come and meet because we are on the front line, and a lot of things have changed, but we have been doing our duties the same way. Metro, for example, has changed times, so we have been taking Ubers and taking lifts to get to work still at six o'clock in the morning, to still open the stores, to still have the food on the tables for the community. We are asking customers to at least just put on your mask, and that's like we have to be a security and also do our jobs without receiving any type of hazard pay. A lot of our families, wives, and husbands aren't working, so we are the only providers for the house. And we're still there every day to do the job that we have signed up to do. And we guess asking you guys to come out and meet so we can adjust to the way that the world is adjusting because the world is not the same from what it was set to. That's what we are here for. We ask you guys to come and meet, and I thank you for your time. I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you so much, Christopher, for sharing your story. This is the same story that hundreds of thousands of Marylanders are facing. So we stand in solidarity, and we're going to fight to protect our workers and do whatever it takes. I'd now like to pass it on to Larry Stafford from Progressive Maryland.
Great. Thank you, Catherine. I really appreciate that. My name is Larry Stafford Jr., and I'm the executive director for Progressive Maryland, an organization representing over a hundred thousand progressives within the state of Maryland who live, work, and live their lives in the state of Maryland, who right now, many of whom are suffering as a result of this pandemic. And we're joining today after making the decision this week, just yesterday, to support this campaign for a special session. And we're joining today with a great understanding of the difficult times that we're in and the fact that we have to make some consequential decisions once the legislature reconvenes. And these can be difficult decisions for our leaders, and we make no mistakes in understanding what that means. However, there is too much at stake right now to wait until January. Not only are people suffering through evictions, through having inadequate access to unemployment insurance, a lack of hazard pay, a lack of PPE, but there are things that are at stake that if we don't take action in the coming months before December 1st, actually, that, you know, we could lose a lot. And one of those things is, hits me near and dear, actually, because I'm an HBCU graduate myself. And I'm very worried about the fact that if we do not override the governor's veto on the HBCU settlement, we stand to potentially lose out on $577 million over the next ten years for Maryland's HBCUs. This is a bill that was put forward by the Speaker of the House, rightfully so, to make sure that this long-fought battle was finally settled. It's been going on since 2006. But if action is not taken before December 1st, the fate of this historic effort is in grave jeopardy. And many of us remember during the time when this legislation was passed, there was a standing ovation amongst both legislators in the House and the Senate when it passed on the floor, and people were rightfully excited about this. But now it's in jeopardy if we do not act soon. So for this and other reasons, over the next few weeks, Progressive Maryland, our staff and our member leaders and our chapters around the state are going to be pressing for this special session. We'll be reaching out to thousands of Maryland voters to make sure that they weigh in because we know that seventy-six percent or more Marylanders support the General Assembly getting back to work and helping Marylanders get through this crisis. Thousands of Marylanders, as Rakara just mentioned, have to go to work every single day during this pandemic. And we expect our leaders that we elect to do the same thing. We stand at a crossroads of a historic moment, and the actions or inaction of our state representatives will be remembered. The true measure of a leader is revealed and what they do during a time of crisis. And we will remember who the true leaders were in this historic moment, and we will remember those who chose to stand on the sidelines as well. And this isn't about any myself or any single voice that's speaking out in support of a special session. This is about the hundreds of thousands of Marylanders who need help from their elected leaders right now, and their governor is not delivering that for them. So I urge every single member of the Maryland General Assembly to join us in this call to reconvene and help Marylanders get by and save Maryland's HBCU settlement.
Thank you so much, Larry. I think you ended on such a strong note. Speaker Jones and President Ferguson, if you are listening, we need your leadership and meeting it urgently. I'm going to pass it over to Zephyr Shaw from the Public Justice Center.
Thank you, Catherine. So my name is Zephyr Shaw. I'm a housing attorney in our Human Rights to Housing project at the Public Justice Center, which is a civil legal services organization that provides legal advice and representation to hundreds of Maryland renters each year and has been a co-founding member of the Legislative Advocacy Coalition, Renters United Maryland, for the past three years. Since March of this year, we've joined fellow advocates in demanding that Governor Hogan do more to avoid a catastrophe of housing loss and debt accumulation. And at the outset, I'll remind you that the governor did the right thing. He promised that no tenant would be evicted during this pandemic. But his executive orders didn't live up to that promise. His order said, "Come to court and prove you were impacted by COVID-19, and in some cases, not all, you can keep your home." And this limited protection ends whenever the state of emergency is rescinded, which could happen at any time. So this leaves thousands of Maryland families with uncertainty about their right to a roof over their head during a pandemic. It's often said that the governor issued an eviction moratorium, but actually, that was the work of the chief judge of the Court of Appeals, and the judge lifted the moratorium on July 25th. Eviction cases are docketed right now, and more than half of the governor's rental assistance allocation isn't ready for localities to use at the moment. So the General Assembly's leadership has been badly needed. It is sorely needed right now. It's projected at the moment, based on US Census Pulse survey data from last week, that forty percent of Maryland renter households right now are unable to pay rent or uncertain that they will be able to. That's 274,000 households, and we know that the black and brown households among those will be disproportionately impacted. We need our elected representatives in the General Assembly to convene and meet this crisis head-on. Waiting until January may very well be too late for those households. We call on the legislature to convene a special session and ensure that there is sufficient assistance for renters and homeowners and that people have time, without the threat of loss of housing, to secure that assistance. In Maryland, the governor allocated $10 million to assist the properties that the state itself finances, and just $20 million for renters throughout the state. Meanwhile, the Pennsylvania legislature allocated $150 million and $25 million just for homeowners. New Jersey's legislature allocated $100 million for rental assistance. Maryland voters deserve that level of leadership. Additionally, the state legislature is the only branch of government right now that can ensure that Maryland residents do not lose housing during the pandemic. Several local legislatures have tried to increase renter protections during the crisis, but eviction is largely a matter of state law, and we need our state legislators to change the law or to enable local legislation to happen. We need a moratorium that lasts into 2021. We need expansion of the governor's limited protection so that it covers all renters. We need to create and fund a right to counsel for anyone facing eviction, and we need to require that lease terminations have a just cause. These are the policies that we endorse. We need the Assembly to pass this legislation before the eviction crisis is well out of hand. Our state delegates and senators cannot wait and simply let hundreds of thousands of Marylanders lose their housing.
Thank you so much, Zephyr. I really appreciate that, and it really is a perfect transition into our next speaker, who is a tenant facing some very severe challenges with housing right now. Jenny Clem, and Josie, go ahead and jump in.
Hola Jenny. Si estás lista, vamos a presentar tu historia, tu testimonio. ¿Puedes encender tu micrófono, por favor? Ahí te veo. ¿Puedes decir algunas palabras? Lo que voy a hacer yo es traducir después que hayas presentado tu testimonio. Estás con el micrófono apagado. Te veo, pero no te escucho. Ahora. Sí, muy bien, pero ahora, ahí está. Ahí estamos. Okay. Por favor, empieza a hablar. Yo voy a estar aquí lista escribiendo para poder traducir después de que hayas presentado tu testimonio.
Soy Jenny Clem. Soy una madre soltera con tres niños. Con la pandemia, he quedado sin trabajo. Han sido días difíciles. Ha sido días difíciles porque no hemos tenido para pagar la renta. Desde hace un mes, yo apliqué para el programa de ayuda para la ciudad de... Para la ciudad... ...para poder hacer... ...el portón. Dicen ellos mismos, vienen con el chedi a cerrar la puerta, y no tengo a dónde irme con mis tres hijos. Bueno, van a bloquear la puerta. No voy a poder entrar hasta que pague la renta. Entonces estoy preocupada porque no tengo dinero para pagar la renta. Entonces, con la ayuda del programa, depende de que mis hijos y yo estemos adentro en casa. Y no tenemos un techo para decir, ok, vamos a ir a tal lado. No tengo familiares también acá. Les pido su munición. Y... No tengo... ...generación.
Jenny está un poco entrecortado. ¿Puedes mover el teléfono a otro sitio para ver si eso ayuda con la conexión al internet? Y repetir esas últimas oraciones que recién dijiste.
Okay.
Ahora se escucha mejor. Muy bien.
¿Se escucha mejor?
Sí, ahora sí.
Entonces, yo les pido su ayuda para... ...y... ...y... Ya hay esa pandemia, y tenemos hijos. Entonces, que nos ayuden porque ahorita no puedo. Tengo tres hijos. No tengo... Te... ...peligra también de... ...infectada o... Entonces, sí, yo les pido el apoyo, que me apoyen en mi caso porque he estado batallando. Ya hace dos semanas he estado batallando para pagar mi renta, para que ellos me aprueben el caso. Entonces, yo les pido su apoyo, por favor, y que nos ayude para la comunidad hispana, para que no seamos desalojados.
Gracias, Jenny, por compartir tu historia, compartir tu testimonio. Lo que voy a hacer ahora es traducirlo al inglés para que nuestros compañeros en medio de la prensa puedan también entender la realidad de la situación. ¿Puedes apagar tu micrófono y mantenerte en la línea por si sale alguna pregunta? Para ti.
¿Ya está apagado?
No, a ver, yo puedo pagártelo de aquí. Ahora sí. Gracias, Jenny. Translating for Casa member Jenny Clem, speaking in I statement. My name is Jenny Clem. I am a single mother of three children. Since March, with the pandemic, I've been out of work. These have been difficult days because we have not had the money needed to pay the rent. I have applied for the City Assistance Program about a month ago, and I'm still struggling to get approved. Meanwhile, my landlord has already sent me a letter saying that I had until August 24th to pay the rent. If I don't, they will come with the sheriff, change the lock on my house, and I will be evicted. I'm worried because I don't have the money, and my family and I depend on this assistance program to have a roof over our heads. I ask for your support for our community. We need you to gather in a special session and create laws that prevent evictions from taking place because the governor has abandoned us. We urgently need the support of our legislators to ensure that no one gets evicted. Leaving us on the street in the middle of a pandemic is inhumane. I have three children, and right now, I can't pay the rent. I have no one to take care of my children during this time, and I've been battling so that they approve my case for the City Assistance Program. We need help. I turn it back to you, Kat.
Thank you so much, Josie, for translating, and thank you so much, Jenny, for sharing your testimony. In addition to housing, in addition to our ask for worker protection and overriding that HBCU bill, there are also some financial risks of not reconvening. So I'm now going to pass it on to Nikki Thompson from the Maryland Center for Economic Policy.
Good morning, everyone. Again, Nikki Thompson, the campaign manager for the Maryland Center on Economic Policy. And I want to thank my colleagues for outlining the human cost, the lost lives and livelihoods of Maryland residents during this pandemic if we don't have a special session. But as mentioned, I'm going to go over some of the financial costs. Without a special session, the state is tied to the budget decisions made by the Board of Public Works, which can only cut from certain parts of the budget. And even worse, Maryland stands to lose $300 million in revenue because of corporate and business tax giveaways passed through the CARES Act. How do we lose this $300 million? Well, Maryland is automatically locked into some of the corporate and business tax giveaway provisions through the federal legislation, the CARES Act. These tax provisions are retroactive, so businesses are able to file an amended tax return. And once it's processed, $300 million evaporates like that, and we are increasingly getting closer to the processing deadline. Only a special session can address these retroactive tax measures by decoupling from these tax incentives. Now, what could our state do with that $300 million? At the overall average cost, $300 million is equivalent to the state cost of Medicaid coverage for 88,000 people. We could buy a Chromebook or a laptop for every single one of the 120,000 public school children who don't have one. And finally, it could provide critical rental assistance to 200,000 residents. So while Maryland families are scraping together every penny they have to make ends meet, our state seems to believe that we can leave $300 million on the table, and we simply cannot. A special session provides an opportunity to begin a more comprehensive update of the state budget that is able to consider the whole picture of the state's resources and needs. Maryland can't afford a harmful cuts-only approach, and it surely can't afford to lose $300 million in revenue. So I'm here to urge our legislators to act now by convening a special session to address these critical financial concerns. Thank you.
Nikki, thank you so much. I am now going to pass it to Patrick Moran from Ask Me.
Good morning, and thank you, everyone, and thank you to everyone at CASA for convening this press conference.
Good morning, and thank you, everyone, and thank you to everyone at CASA for convening this press conference. ASME Council III is joining our brothers and sisters here today, calling for a special session to address the urgent needs, including pressing health care and safety concerns we have for our members and for the community at large. You know, we're calling on the governor to immediately convene a special session because we can't afford, at this point, to see more of our members get sick and die. Tens of thousands of ASME members have worked throughout the pandemic with over 600 contracting the virus, and we actually have lost two members during this pandemic due to their exposure at work. The legislature, and more importantly, the governor, needs to enhance revenues so that our members can continue to work through this pandemic. Our members are providing incredible services such as unemployment insurance, food stamps, foster care, to name a few, and mental health services that have to continue regardless of whether there is a pandemic or not. And they're continuing to show up to work each and every day facing this pandemic and the consequences of it. They need to put... The governor needs to have a special session so that the PPE regulations, testing, and tracing protocols are robust and funded. We need additional protections for all workers in Maryland, not just our members. As the brother from Giant Foods said, "They are facing the pandemic every day as customers come in, but they're providing an essential service to people, food, that we need to make sure is safe and accessible to everyone." Workers should not be sacrificial lambs during this process and during the pandemic. We should be doing everything we can to be protecting frontline employees and workers who keep our state together. You know, I want to thank Brother Stafford for bringing up the issue of the HBCUs and the threats that they face right now. We represent the employees at all the state HBCUs. And it's unbelievable the amount of, you know, problems they are facing given the pandemic, but more importantly, the gross underfunding they are facing in comparison to the other state schools. We have... We represent people down at UMES, University of Maryland Eastern Shore, that are facing furloughs. But if you look just 12 miles up at the road at Salisbury State University, it is thriving, and they have more money than they can ever imagine using. The disparity is massive, and we need to address that, and the governor needs to address that. And the legislature needs to override the governor's veto when it comes to the funding of HBCUs. So far, almost 97,000 Marylanders have been infected with the virus and over 3,400 have died. The question is, when is enough is enough? When is the governor going to do what he needs to do to govern and not try to pass it off on the counties and take the lead? We need a special session to take the necessary safety steps to protect humanity, to protect the people of Maryland. So the time for a special session is now, and we can't emphasize that enough and stress that enough. So thank you.
Pat, thank you so much. The time is absolutely right now. To close us off, I am going to pass it to Reverend Kobe Little, who will close us off in a word of unity.
Good morning. Thank you, Catherine, for your outstanding leadership. Thank you to all of the wonderful people of Maryland who stand on the front lines, who work in our grocery stores, who labor us in the food service industry, for those who get up and go to work in health care environments every day, for those who are responsible for moving other essential workers from home to work and back to home. We say thank you, and we are grateful for your contributions to the welfare of the people of this state. We're also grateful for each of the advocates, each of the people who stand in representation and offer their voices in support of justice in this moment. Now, we're calling on the governor, you Governor Larry Hogan, and Speaker Jones and President Ferguson to recognize that this is not a political moment. This is a moral moment. This is a moment that requires leadership. It's our prayer that you hear the frontline workers, the people that you serve, the people who have entrusted you to lead. We pray today that you hear them and that you exhibit the courage and the compassion, the leadership and the creativity to solve the problems of this day. We need you to commit to being instruments of hope, of help, and of healing. It's not enough to be silent. Silence is complicity. It's not enough to point the finger at other leaders. We need you, Governor, Speaker, and President, to lean in now and lead. Other essential workers have shown up day in and day out. Now it's time for the Maryland General Assembly to show up and to do the people's business. We've all seen the inequity. We've all seen the inequity of inequity. We've seen the public health consequences of white supremacy. We have seen the police violence and the police terror that results from an inequitable law enforcement system steeped in slavery. Each day that passes, communities of color and other vulnerable populations are hit in unimaginable ways by this inequity. And for this reason, Mr. Governor, Madam Speaker, and Mr. President, we call on you now to take action, to show the people of Maryland that in fact you're doing everything possible, everything within your power, to solve these problems, to protect the people of this state, to correct the inequities that we have inherited so that they don't impact us in deleterious ways during this pandemic. Finally, we call on not just the governor and the leadership of the Maryland General Assembly, but we call on each individual senator and each individual member of the House of Delegates to not only celebrate heroes like Sojourner Truth and Ida Wells and Harriet Tubman and Frederick Douglass and John Lewis and Martin King, but we call on you to be like Arthur Ashe, to be a voice of conscience. You know very well how the people of your districts are suffering. And usually, members of the General Assembly are expected to follow leadership. But in times like these, we need voices of conscience, people who will stand on principle. Even though their position is not popular, even though their position may not be comfortable, we need people to raise their voice and call for our government to do the right thing. And we expect you, Governor, and you, Madam Speaker, and you, Mr. President, not to punish people for falling out of the leadership line, but to appreciate and respect the courage of these advocates who are speaking on their convictions, the courage of delegates and senators who call for the reconvening of the Maryland General Assembly. Together is the way forward. Principle, not politics, is the way forward. Embracing the moral compass that's needed to solve our problems is the way forward. And it's our prayer that you hear us today and that you put aside the things of politics and lift up the things of our people. Thank you, and God bless all of you.
Reverend Little, thank you so much for closing us out on that note. This press conference is only the beginning of our effort. We will continue to call on the members of the General Assembly to reconvene, to take action, and we will continue to hold you accountable to the people of Maryland. So at this time, we are open to take questions. We have several advocates, in addition to the speakers, who are on the line right now. So if you would like to ask a question, go ahead and reach out via chat. Josie, if you feel comfortable going ahead and reading out any questions, you can go ahead and do that. That would be great. We will be prioritizing any questions from journalists. But members of the community who are tuning in, please feel free to ask your questions, whether it's in the Zoom or on the Facebook, and we will try our best to get them answered for you. That's right. We will start off first with Diana Bergman. Diana, I am allowing you to talk. Please unmute your lines and begin talking.
Hi, my name is Diana Bergman, and I would like to see and demand a special session to have the opportunity to allocate additional funds for behavioral health. During all this, emotionally, this has been draining for absolutely every single person in Maryland. We've always had a shortage when it comes to behavioral health, a shortage of beds, and to be able to provide that emotional health well-being for individuals in the state. So I would like to see that part also be addressed in a special session to make sure everybody's emotionally sound and has access to the resources they need when it comes to everyone's emotional well-being. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that comment. I think this is exactly part of the reason why we are calling on the General Assembly to reconvene. There have been a number of bills, critical bills, that Governor Hogan has vetoed, including the Blueprint for Maryland's Future. This bill included a number of behavioral health items that would be implemented in our public schools. So we are hopeful that that will be one of the priorities going forward. If there are no other questions, I will go ahead and end the press conference. I want to thank everyone for tuning in. Please feel free to reach out to us or any of the advocates who you have heard from today. We will continue pushing for this special session. And for folks who are listening in, please join us in our efforts. It is time to make sure the people of Maryland are protected. Thank you.